All right. Let's go ahead and bring the November 1st, 2016 Warranton Board of Aldermen meeting into session. If you guys would please rise with us instead of wet allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda would be the proclamation for the Lady Warrior softball team.
They all have to stand down.
Guess I'll read this first and then I'll present it to you guys. Proclamation cleared, whereas the City of Warranton is proud among the Warranton Lady Warriors varsity softball team, and whereas the Warranton Lady Warriors varsity softball team led by head coach Trevor Kitts has represented the City of Warranton, Missouri in honor for displaying the highest level of sportsmanship and athletic achievement, and whereas the Warranton Lady Warriors varsity softball team exemplifies and promotes the Missouri State High School Athletic Association's values of participation, sportsmanship, team play, and personal excellence to develop citizens who make positive contributions to their community and support of democratic principles of our state and nation, and whereas the Warranton Lady Warriors varsity softball team completed the 2016 season with an impressive record of 27 wins and one loss, brought home to Class III -- and brought home the Class III state championship, and whereas by virtue of their accomplishments on the field, the Lady Warriors -- the Warranton Lady Warriors varsity softball team has brought great pride to the entire community by being the only team in school history to have back-to-back state championship wins. Now therefore, let it be resolved that Mayor Eric Schluter and the Board of Aldermen are proud to recognize the Warranton Lady Warrior varsity softball team in coming to 2016 Class III state champions, and congratulate them on their second consecutive state softball championship title, dated this first day of November 2016. Congratulations.
Photo bomb time, right?[232.62][232.62](laughter)
Can we add to the bottom of the agenda for next year, too? What are we pressing for? Pretty much next year. You guys, none of you guys want to stay and listen to this meeting?[249.12][249.12](laughter)
Service class.
Yeah, we can get you some extra credit, baby.
Fred, you scared him out. I was just right there. Is this on the news?
All right, we'll give it a moment here, boys.
No question. Okay, can I drive home?
Don't start it, please. Take care, guys, thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda would be the consent agenda.
First item is the regular meeting minutes from October 18th, 2016, and approval to transfer Justin Unger from police officer to detective.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Scholl Harvey, signed by Alderman Miller. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. All right. Next item on the agenda is hearing from the public. We will keep you at a five-minute maximum on a time limit, but if you have anything you'd like to come up and present, we ask you to come to the podium, state your name, and state what reason you're here. Not seeing anyone, we'll move on. Next would be Board of Aldermen comments. Anyone have anything they'd like to share?
Not tonight.
Not tonight, okay. Next would be Mayor comments. Well, I think there's a lot to talk about, but one thing I want to do is just thank everybody for pitching in when I couldn't be here yesterday, or the last meeting. Thank you, Alderman Scholl Harvey, for filling in, I appreciate that, but thank you to everybody else who's been checking up and at least filling in, so thank you. So I'd also like to talk about appointments. My appointments that I'd like to make for the Economic Development Committee, which is a two-year term, would be Rick Gastorff, Jeff Williams, and Sharon Spady, I'm sorry. So if there's any questions or comments, otherwise I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointments for -- of Rick Gastorff, Jeff Williams, and Sharon Spady for the Economic Development Committee for a two-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cassely, signed by Alderman Miller. Roll call vote.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Next item on the agenda would be the -- is it Hell on Wheels Railroad Days? Is that correct?
Yes.
And Gary McCullough, please come on.
Thank you for this opportunity to explain to you what the train club in town is doing. I represent the Central Missouri Railroad Association, who meets now at the Island Mall for the last eight-plus years, and we have a need for the club to expand our levels of income. We've -- for eight years now, we've kept our dues very cheap to make it as affordable to the community as possible. But with things, the economy going the way it is, we've got to figure out ways to bring in more money. So far, for the last five years, we've put on a one-day train swap meet at the Elks Lodge, and we do okay with it, but it's not going to carry us into the future. To expand on that, we've got to doing research on different ways to do it, and a lot of towns throughout the United States have Railroad Days festivals. We have, because of the history of this county, we have a somewhat unique opportunity, but the fact that Truesdale is what was originally called a Hell on Wheels town. Any town where the railroad staged materials and housed workers and everything else was automatically called Hell on Wheels until it was named something else by the railroad general. We would like to use that history as a way to bring not only more money into the club by turning our swap meet into a two-day event, but by creating a Railroad Days festival that isn't really being emulated anywhere else. They have them all over the country, like I say, but we want to focus on that history. And the history of Hell on Wheels towns is very interesting. Our research shows that the towns in the middle of the country range in size, the town of Marceline, Missouri, is pretty remote. They have a Railroad Days festival. They don't publish any numbers, but our club set up a small layout up there this past spring. I talked to people from Chicago, from Omaha and Lincoln, Nebraska, several cities in eastern Kansas. People that are into trains travel a long distance. I just come back from a vacation where the primary purpose of it was to take an old logging railroad in the middle of the Appalachian Mountains, so -- and that was a day and a half drive just getting there. So train people are weird, but they will travel. What makes them travel is to get -- if we can get the railroad or other resources to bring in rolling stock, particularly if it's historic in some way. People will come from a thousand miles away to see them. Now, we're looking at this opportunity, and we're talking -- some of the other research, Galesburg, Illinois, the town of 30,000 people, they had 11,000 visitors to their town this year. Their estimates are that an individual that goes to -- comes to their event for one day spends $80. If they come for two days, they spend $135. This is per person. That's a lot of money when you've got 11,000 visitors. There's a town in southern Louisiana called De Quincy, and it's kind of remote. The closest towns of any size to the east is Baton Rouge, 155 miles away. To the west is Houston, 135 miles away. This past spring, they had 20,000 visitors to their event. Talking serious outside money coming into a community, which will grow a community a lot faster than -- I don't have to explain this, you folks know this more than I do. The local money changing hands is nice, but when you've got outside money coming in, it's going to grow the community. And we want to share that with the community by getting as much of the community involved as possible. So far, we've met with the Board of Commissioners for the county, they're behind it 110 percent, they're looking at ways to try to help us. The town of -- excuse me, I'm going brain dead here. Truesdale is 100 percent behind it. While Truesdale would be the focus for historical purposes, Truesdale has -- does not have the amenities and facilities to make this work totally. Warranton has the gas, Warranton has the motels, Warranton has the food. Warranton stands to make a great deal of money, the Warranton community, a great deal of money from an event like this. And my sole purpose here to cut this meeting as short as possible is to try to get the Board of Warranton behind us also. Warranton has resources that we're going to need to make this happen. I've already talked with Melissa Booth on the Board of Tourism, she's very excited about the possibilities. The county likes the idea so much, they would like us to eventually grow it into a countywide event. With North County having the current Norfolk and Southern Railroad, and the southern end of the county having the history with the MKNT, we think this is a very doable thing, and will attract -- the bigger it is, the more people will come from farther away. So that's -- I thank you for your time, but that's all I'm doing is asking for the city's support to help us make this happen. So I thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I have probably a question. Terry, would this be something that maybe he should come before the Tourism Commission on?
I would think so, yes.
Okay, good. We -- every month, we have a Tourism Commission meeting, and basically, these are the kind of things we look to promote. Usually at eight o'clock in the morning on the fourth Tuesday of the month, which our next meeting will be November 22nd, something like that.
Thanksgiving.
Last Thanksgiving.
Yes, it's a Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
Be the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So can we set up an invite to him to maybe?
Sure.
Look at -- could you make eight o'clock in the morning?
I don't know if I can personally make it, I'm going to the hospital next week for surgery, and I'll be down for about three weeks, but I will try to make it, and I'm sure the club president will be there.
Well, and if they can't make that one, you know, there's one in December, too.
And we're also -- we're trying to put together a steering committee of people from all of the different entities involved with it, including the fraternal groups, the scouts, anybody that wants to participate in this. We've already talked to the Historical Society, they've named a member to the Steering Committee. The library wants to get involved with it. So far, and like I say, Melissa Booth is very interested in it, and I know she has brought it up to the Board of Tourism.
I don't think she has yet. She may have intended to at the next meeting.
And it may have been through formal discussions, I don't know if it was a meeting or not, but she's -- I've asked her to be on the Steering Committee for it also, and she's agreed with that, as long as it's okay with her boss. This is an event that gets me so excited, and Alderman Schultz can tell you, I snagged him at the street fair, and I held him there for quite a while while I tried to explain to him what we were doing. It's not something that's just going to be a benefit to the train club, it'll be a benefit to the entire North County area, we believe. We don't know how many people, it depends, the number of people we can attract the first year depends on what kind of trains and rolling stock we can get set on the siding in Truesdale. The more -- the older and the more steam is involved, the more people will drive thousands of miles to see this stuff, so.
I think that'd be the next step, if you would.
Okay, great.
Come before Tourism.
We'll work it out.
This should probably be one of the first steps to get approval for.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Is there a normal time, is it what time of a year, time of year do you normally do an event like this?
Well, we've always had our show historically, the first Saturday in August. For this type of event, it's going to be way too hot to do it then. And that's something that the Steering Committee, we would like everybody's input on when would be the best time to do this. We thought it might be a good thing to tag it on to the street fair weekend. Melissa said that she talked to some of the other people on the Board, and they didn't think that was a good idea, and we're willing to, you know, we're open to everything and What we're trying to do is get the entire community and county working together for one goal that could make a tremendous impact on this area financially. So.
I agree.
Okay.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. I know you got to get to voting.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
(inaudible).
No, we don't need to vote anything, anything you need to go support Tourism, you know, don't pitch whatever we need to, far away. Oh, he's got a vote down there. They're voting their board on, and he just came up here to present.
Yeah, that's what we need to show.
I would agree. All right. Next item on the agenda would be discussion topic for draft of chicken ordinance. So I'm going to open this up to the Alderman, and if you've read it, is there any discussion among what you?
I had a chance to read it, I think that's about what we talked about in our discussions.
I read it as well, and I don't see any -- it pretty much sums up everything I think that we've been discussing for a few months.
Well, I, since I'm not a chicken grower, I read it, it made sense to me, but I did ask if Penny could come, or at least give me some feedback as to, for somebody who's familiar with this, did the ordinance make any sense, or were there areas we might have missed in the ordinance? Because I mean, I don't know anything about the process, so I don't know if it's appropriate, if she has comments, if you'd open it or not, but that's kind of where I -- because the questions I had is, you know, we had six chickens down, some people mentioned if you're going to try to feed your family on them, eight would be more appropriate, you know, that type of stuff. Nothing material jumped out of me, but then again, I don't grow chickens, so.
I know we had pretty lengthy discussions, I mean, I guess I wouldn't mind a brief.
I mean, there's just two people here that they have comments about the ordinance.
I just don't want, I don't want it to overlap into a large one because of the, unless it's something that needs to be.
Well, I think, yeah, but you can control that.
If you'd like to ask for a question, that's bound to be.
Well, I mean, did you have any comments on what you read?
I promise I won't all along. And I talked before about having a mobile coop, and I didn't see that addressed. I did have a question, I don't understand why the coop should not be visible from adjoining properties.
If I can just answer that second question first, is, well, first off, the mobile coop, we tried to write it so it didn't specifically say you can have a mobile coop, but it didn't forbid it, you know, they kind of leave it ambiguous enough, it just had to remain within the property section, but I'll go ahead and revisit that to make sure, because I know that was one of the notes I had. The second thing regarding the screening, we looked at the cities that the Board wanted or liked the ordinance, and we actually cut the screening requirements down three-quarters of what they had, and just kept it, trying to keep it as a very brief screening requirement, because we didn't really talk about that at the last meeting that much. I mean, some of the cities had just really extremes, I don't want to use extreme, it's probably appropriate for that community, you assume, but, you know, you couldn't, it had to be okay, you couldn't see like the outlines of the animals and stuff like that, it was like really over the top, so we just actually just made it less to say that it has to be screened from neighboring property, assuming the fact that they might do something that a neighbor may not like, the coop itself, not the area they exercise in or whatnot, just the coop itself, it was not a, you know.
Because if you just have hens, they're not doing anything offensive.
Well, I know that, but the idea being, all these other cities had these really extreme screening requirements, so kind of figured it had some things, we boiled it down in one sense to say, basically, you can't make it, it can't be, the coop itself can't be visible from neighboring property, but if you guys want to remove that, that's fine.
What section are you on here? Two points?
It's on the second page, C5.
C5. Coops in closed areas. Because I think it's almost going to be impossible not to have a view, if you put the coop in the back of your yard, it's going to be away from your house, it'll be away from your neighbors, but there still will be some visibility there.
Well, I think, I understand why you don't want to smell them, and you don't want to hear them, but not seeing them, I wondered about that, and, you know, like I said before, I had the mobile coop, which keeps them moving around so you don't have a dirty hatch in your yard, which I prefer to putting up a permanent coop and fence, because to me, I think this is cleaner and healthier for your yard, if you have space to do that, and I know a six-foot privacy fence doesn't seem very neighborly to me.
So going back to the mobile, and what it basically says is, it must be, the chicken must be confined, you know, obviously that's protected chicken from predators, but it says the coop shall be maintained and shall be built with, you know, proper materials. So the mobile coop is not prohibited by this. It's just not specifically defined to say you can have a mobile coop, it's just, it's not prohibited by this, so it was written with that in mind as well.
We don't have anything in there that says you have to have a stationary coop.
Yeah, yeah, it's not like a stick.
It just refers to this coop.
And it makes no difference to me about the screen, the screening of the coop or the requirement, yeah, I think part of the logic is, what is it built out of, does one neighbor think it maybe looks junky and they don't want to see it, or they don't want to view it or whatnot, which I think sometimes the coops can be that way, but that was really the only, the only thing, like I said, there was such high levels of regulation on the screen that we just tried to make it in one sense to say it's not visible so that, you know, we don't get a complaint that says, I'm tired of seeing my neighbor's chicken coop or something like that, but if you guys want to take it out, that's fine, too.
And I did want to say that I appreciate you getting this together so quickly, I was really surprised.
Well, I copied it from another city, so I appreciate it.
I appreciate you coming to.
Pleasure is of course, a lawyer's trade.
Public document.
Public document. It's not a pleasure, it's a public document.
But that's basically all I wanted to just see is, you know, would I be allowed to do it like I did before, or?
Because if you have a coop that you're moving around, you can't keep that from being hidden from the neighbor's view unless you require a six-foot fence, and that's, you know. I drove our neighborhood, there's only maybe 80 homes, in my immediate neighborhoods, there's only three of them that have six-foot fences, so, you know.
And we have a relaxed neighborhood, we don't.
Yours is pretty open.
We each mow over our lines, you know, to, that's the polite thing to do, and the kids come in and out of each other's yards, and I don't want to put up a big fence, but I really want chickens, and I'll do what you say, but that's, that was my only thing, is I didn't see anything about the coop, so I didn't know if it had to be a six-foot fence or what, and I'm going to.
How much you agree? You're going to take it out?
Yeah.
I would just take out the screening requirement altogether.
Well, can we take it out, and if we have issues, then we can always reconsider the bill, because I mean, this is a document, I would think.
Yeah, we, I wrote, I wrote something in here that says, any modifications to the ordinance must be complied with within, I think, we changed it to 90 days, so if you guys change the ordinance, then the property owner will have 90 days to accommodate, anticipating this is our first stab at it, it may need some change, so if you guys want to take it out and then revisit and see if there's a problem that's, because we're doing a permit system that then, you know, would require them to come to compliance with their permit. And the other thing was, we came up with some language, after completion of two years with the permit, with no violations, no annual fee shall be required, so as long as there is no violations of this section. So we kind of wrote that where after the two-year period, you're not required to have a permit, or pay a fee as long as you're not, it's not a waiver, as long as you're not.
As long as you're in compliance with what the.
Yeah, we should take that out, that's really.
My gut would be take out the screening part, and we need to add it back in because it's problematic, we do. I could see how if you have the coop close to your house, and your neighbor's close to his house to you, and you want to block it, but if you have it at the end of your yard, the only way you could really block it is by putting a six-foot fence around, that seems like a little illegal.
I agree.
Is that agreeable?
Yes, I agree.
Mike, any others?
So when we get to the point of the ordinance later for that, we can pass the ordinance with the change of taking out section five.
No, the ordinance will be on the next meeting.
Yeah, it'll be on the next. Okay. The process is, we'll make that change, next meeting we'll pass, or put up.
Or we'll put it up for approval.
We're not taking out the whole five, are we? You're just taking out the screening portion.
The screening portion.
Just the screening. The coops in the rear yard still remain.
Yeah, there's that last sentence.
Just in it.
On wheels. Because with my thoughts, we can make that last one, and we can revisit it.
I think that's agreeable. Thank you for coming down.
Appreciate it. All right. Next item on the agenda would be hearing from our Director of Operations and Finance Officer, Terry Thorne.
The first item I have for you this evening is the result of the Tourism Commission meeting on October 25th. They have one item for consideration, which was payment for one of the concert in the park series, it was the three-point pitch band for $300, which was a budgeted item, and they recommended approval for that expense.
Any questions to come up to? All right. Yep, I'll entertain a motion to approve the tourism recommendations in the amount of $300.
Oh, so moved.
I'll second.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, signed by Alderman Miller. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Abstain.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, abstaining.
Abstention.
I'm sorry?
No.
Abstention, sorry. Abstention, sorry. I'm going to correct it. Abstention.
My next item for you tonight is the renewal for the property and liability insurance. The increase this year is a three percent overall increase, which amounts to four thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars over last year's premium. There were some new endorsements that netted between the changes, six hundred and seventy-six dollars. There was an increase in the general liability, which is based upon expenses and payroll and those actual numbers, total four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. The law enforcement liability increased two thousand four seventy-seven, which is because we are much closer to full staff than what we were for last year's period. An increase in property for three hundred and thirty-five dollars due to the addition of playground equipment. Some things decreased, the automobile coverage, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars, we removed a vehicle from the policy, but all of that told, the new premium is a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars.
Are we required under statute to bid out insurance periodically or?
Yes.
How often is that the cycle, right?
It's seven years on property and liability and three years on health insurance.
Any other questions you can ask? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the property and liability insurance renewal in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars.
So moved. I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Delloy, signed by Alderman Schultz. Roll call vote please.
Alderman Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes. Motion carries six zero.
The next thing I have is just to make you aware and as much, I think all of you have now signed, but the public, we had pursued with Bard Corman the possibility of going through the legislature for the naming of the Jerry Dyer Memorial overpass. He had suggested that there was an easier process, which was completion of a petition with a hundred signatures, and that can then go to the Transportation Committee as opposed to through the full legislature. So we thank him for giving us that option, we were not aware of that, and wanted you to be aware that there was going to be a petition that was circulating. However, Cheryl Dyer came at the end of last week and picked up the form because we wanted to be able to allow her family to be the first ones to sign, and within a few hours, she was back wanting more pages. So she has already collected all of those hundred signatures except for about a half page that I asked her to stay so that all of you got an opportunity to sign that. So we will be submitting that to whoever the individual is that we need to send it back to and getting that process started before the end of this week. So that, I don't know how long it takes to get through that committee, but certainly it'll be shorter than trying to go through the legislature. So that's moving forward.
Excellent.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item would be hearing from Economic Development Director, Michelle Schluth.
Good evening. First thing I have for you tonight is just to, my report is to mention that I did actually meet with Bill Moore from East Central Broadcast. They are still working on the project and looking at the property and pickney, and hopefully after the middle of this month, we should see some more activity with that and something coming to you soon. The next thing I have for you is, I'm sure you're all aware, Mercy is moving. They are moving to the old Radio Shack facility on Hawthorne Square, and they will be taking patients there as of November fourteenth. They will have a ribbon cutting and grand opening in January. Once I have more information on that, I will get that to all of you. And that's what? Any questions?
Where's the old Radio Shack?
Hawthorne Square, just down from Aldis.
Right by here at Sports.
Oh, okay.
Can I back up one, well, back up to Terry for just one minute? And I kind of forgot it in my, I did notice and I wondered, it looks like we're finally, I did get a call from one of the neighbors over there, it looks like they're finally working to get the Caterpillar moved out there off Warrior Ridge. I stopped by there and I don't know who found out or how they found out, but I guess Steve Giancola is the owner of it, and he and somebody else were out there putting batteries in it and gasoline in it to try to get it to move, try to get it moved. So I don't know who's responsible, who found all that out, but.
I don't know who the owner is, I have not heard that back, but I do know that whoever owns the property, that Jack and his group had gotten in touch with them, so I'm assuming that has been flown to find out, but I don't have any information on who the owner of the equipment itself is. So that.
Steve said, Steve said he owns it.
Must be happening as a result of the property.
But he said it's been sitting there seven years, so.
Wow, great, that's good news.
So, yeah, and so again, and the citizens over there are very appreciative that we're finally getting.
Very good, I'll pass that along to Jack.
So, yeah. No, you're good, anything else? I just want to make sure.
That was it, thank you.
Anything else, Michelle?
That's all I have for you this evening.
Any questions from Michelle? All right, move on. Next is hearing from Finance Manager, Gabrielle Curry.
Good evening. The first item I have is the accounts payable. Do want to note that on here, there are two payments to TS Bansey Construction that are for the Hickory Lake project. They are on here for approval, but we would not release the payments until we actually got the approval from the regional planning for those. So we did include them, so as not to delay payment once we get their approval. So the total amount on the claims report for the month is five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars and sixty-seven cents. Five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Okay, all right, any questions? Comments? All right, I'll go and entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. Did I get that right, Gabrielle?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, already signed by Alderman Delloy. If I could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Person Castily?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you. All right, I guess you have your monthly finance report, I'm sorry.
Yes, I have the report for September. So some highlights, revenues, sales tax, the cumulative revenues are over budget by two percent or twelve thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Billing permits revenue are over budget by three thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars. And connection fees, which is the water and sewer connections, are over by five thousand, six hundred and two dollars. I also had notes on here about the expenses, where the year-to-date expenses exceed revenues in the general fund by six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which shows a deficit, but part of that number is capital expenses that were four hundred and forty-two thousand that were paid from prior year funds. And then we also have seventy-nine thousand, maybe reimbursed for tourism, so just wanted to note that. That's all I have.
Questions? Comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gabrielle. Next item would be the bill's ordinance. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill number forty-two dash sixteen.
So moved. I'll second that.
Motion made by Alderman Miller, seconded by Alderman Schultz.
An ordinance regarding the vacation of a sixty-foot wide unimproved street between Block One and Block Two of Morsie Meyer Kohling Addition to the City of Warnton, Warren County, Missouri.
I'll entertain a motion for a second reading and passage of Bill number forty-two dash sixteen.
So moved. I'll second it.
Motion made by Alderman Delloy, seconded by Alderman Miller.
An ordinance regarding the vacation of a sixty-foot wide unimproved street between Block One and Block Two of the Morsie Meyer Kohling Addition to the City of Warnton, Warren County, Missouri.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Abstain.
Alderman Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
That'd be, the motion, the bill would pass five to zero with one abstention.
Very good.
I'm learning. All right, I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill number forty-three dash sixteen.
So moved. I'll second that.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, already signed by Alderman Schultz.
An ordinance authorizing execution of a direct loan agreement and promissory note between Missouri Transportation Finance Corporation, the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission, and the City of Warnton, Missouri for the purpose of constructing a new I-70 interchange and extending Route MM to the north across I-70 to the north outer road.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill number forty-three dash sixteen.
So moved. I'll second that.
Can I raise a question?
Sure.
Is, is the interest rate here, that's a fixed rate now?
Yes.
The two-point-six-four?
Yes.
Okay, and then the amortization schedule, I assume, will vary based on the drawdown?
Yes.
All right, the motion has been made by Alderman Miller and it's been seconded by Alderman Schultz.
An ordinance authorizing execution of a direct loan agreement and promissory note between Missouri Transportation Finance Corporation, the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission, and the City of Warnton, Missouri for the purpose of constructing a new I-70 interchange and extending Route MM to the north across I-70 to the north outer road.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Motion carries, or bill passes six zero. All right, we've come to that portion of the meeting where I will entertain a motion to close the regular Board of Alderman meeting and go into executive session for real estate. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Shell Harvey, seconded by Alderman Schultz. If I could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.